I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Chrissy.
All right, Wyatt.
Here.
Mingle, Aaron, Reister.
Here.
Bunce present. Lawson is absent.
And that's an excused absence. Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Consent agenda, anything to remove? Now that I don't obtain an emotion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Whatever. Twenties.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Mary's comments. Just an update regarding Hudson Municipal Electric Utility and where we're at in the process of pursuing dissolution or disposal, which was recommended by the HMU board. And then we ratified that, accepted that recommendation a month or so ago. One of the requirements to pursue a potential sale of it is to get two appraisals. One is by the city to have an appraiser appraise it, and also the state to get somebody. Chrissy and I and Dan Brobst were on a conference call with our appraiser candidate this morning. We have gotten a proposal from them. It will be on the next council agenda for approval. There's a flat fee of $11,000. Previously, we'd had estimates of 15,000 to 20,000 for that. We'll also get a recommendation to the state of Iowa so that they pursue getting theirs so that we don't lose time with this whole process. Again, that's a mandatory part prior to being able to put it up for a vote of the citizens as far as moving that responsibility back to the city. Citizens' requests or presentations, Hudson Days Committee. You can tell us anything you want.
Will you believe us?
Depends on who the speaker is.
What I can do is, I'll preface it for what Jim and I and Chrissy had talked about some time ago. We know you want more enforcement of the wristbands in order to raise additional funding. And what we talked about at that time was my willingness to have enforcement by the police force outside of the beer gardens because we've got three establishments with the Beer Garden plus the Fire Department. That's still where I'm at with it, but we're willing to consider whatever expansion you have and then if I've got logic to raise what my concerns are. And that's why we then have it on console for discussion action. But at this point, it's an open forum for anybody that wants to talk about the Hudson Days. One of the things that I would like to know is the funding shortfall that you're trying to come up with. I'm interested in how much funds you got from the wristbands last year. I know I helped one evening selling wristbands and know there was some stuff there. The one thing that I noticed that's been absent over the past number of years, and I can't recall back how far it was. I've been going to a lot of the Hudson Days parades, enjoy the parades, but my recollection is that one time there used to be kids or somebody that would walk down on both sides of the street with a fireman's boot asking for donations toward the fireworks. Did I imagine that or did that actually happen? And if it actually happened, why was it stopped and when did it, what happened to it?
We can't get anybody to do it, any of the kids to do it.
How about adults? I'll volunteer right now to walk down there and do it.
My husband and I went through the crowd during, before fireworks and before the bands started several years, and we got very little. People just, people won't do it. If you ask for it, they won't get it. If you demand, they will.
Okay.
And I know the year that we made the most on the boot was when the Girl Scouts collected it and it was around $500.
That's all?
Yeah.
Well, not that's all. That's a break. That's like, $500 is $500.
That's true.
I mean, um, gee, because one of the things that I've always seen, just out of curiosity, you know, there's a huge crowd that's down by the golf course and stuff. Has there ever been anybody that's walked through there? Because I've never seen them.
I've been doing it just.
We have.
You have down there? Because I, we sit down there every single year and I've never, because, you know, in other places that we've been to in Missouri, the Fourth of July, there were always these people walking back and forth with buckets being passed saying, you know, fireworks donations and stuff.
But you know, you think about it, there's not a lot of people that carry cash anymore.
We talked about that earlier and our thoughts on that was because of most of the vendors and stuff, you have to have cash during this type of event. So thought maybe that weekend there would be more chance that people would have cash.
And I didn't have any problem tonight, but I was selling for a couple sessions up at Randall's. Anybody coming up and asked me if they'd take out a credit card or anything like that, but by that time, I don't know how much your penetration was as far as. What I've talked to Chief Banks about tonight and earlier times is, again, I'm willing to request the police force enforce a wristband on any individual outside of the Beer Garden and establishment. I will not go into the establishment. I do not want to go into the Beer Garden because those establishments are paying for their permits, both for their sales to start with as well as the sales into the Beer Gardens. I'm very willing to establish the routes that individuals will have to have that root band on or that wristband on or be escorted back into an establishment or to a wristband provider to buy a wristband.
Can we do that legally though?
That's, this is all, this is all subject to attorney.
Yeah, I was just gonna say because.
That's what we talked about.
To me, it's, first of all, it's not legal to be out on the street, no matter where you're at, drinking outside of those Beer Gardens.
But that's by ordinance within the city. So if the case is by action by the city.
Is that, I mean, is it, I didn't know if it was, if it's legal in there or if it's just been overlooked and as long as we're within that, we have not been charging it. That's my concern.
Yeah.
So there, is there a, either you charge everybody or nobody, wristbands are not illegal? That's my question.
That's Heather's question.
That's my question. I mean, I just don't want to get into a legal.
What I'd, what I'd like to propose, subject to Heather's concurrence and subject to your thoughts on it, would be establishing a well-defined area that wristband allows you to drink a beer as long as it's been established at one of those four places. Because, you know, no offense to DJ, I don't want to have somebody going into DJ's, buy a 24-pack and sit out there and start setting them out. Or somebody simply bringing in a cooler that's got a 30-pack in it because that defeats the purpose of at least helping the vendors, be it the Fire Department, Federal Pub, Triangle and the AMVets, to also have their sales. But if we defined the area and maybe that area has to include, you know, Washington, Eldora Road from the Fire Department dance all the way up to get them into here by the AM, by the veterans, the vet, where we normally have that blockade. Probably down then to Lincoln Savings Bank, which is where I think the blockade is at. Normally up to the post office. Then the other thing that I'd like consideration of is allowing it also for the people to have the route to go down to the fireworks and they'll drive where it's blocked off.
To let them drink down there?
Yeah, and then coming back up here. Now, that, that's my thought. This is open to council thoughts and reactions, Chief Banks, as well as the citizens.
I guess one might concern too, we could talk about my offices, if they're coming from the Fire Department, what route are they gonna take to get up here? I don't want to see somebody walking on that curb.
Yeah, and that would be.
More intoxicated, that's a busy curb.
Yeah. And that would be coming down to what is a comfortable route? And this would be something we would get the route back to you guys to take a look at and see if that route meets it. But I want to expand it a little bit beyond what it had been.
Just FYI, we're walking that curb anyways.
Everyone.
From the fire station to the downtown.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
But not with a beer in your hand.
Well, no.
Right. I mean, that's, that's.
I mean, no.
No, never have.
So the way I see it with George is, the only reason you're saying from the fire station to downtown is because on Friday nights, after the fire state, after the fireman's dance, people head downtown.
That's what I think.
So the only issue you're gonna have with, as far as I can see, is on Friday nights with that curb, after the fireman, after the fireman's dance. Now, with him talking about going to the fireworks, that's why he said, that's why George is including that. It's not like people are going to, people are gonna be downtown regardless. The only times that they aren't is after the fireman's dance and going to the fireworks. And so I think that's the only time when you would see a beverage outside of the downtown area is in those little short, short hours.
That's why we just like need a map that's outlined at, when they buy their wristband so everybody knows.
Yep.
Because we'd want to, we'd want to laminate a good map that the establishments would have so people going in and out would know, hey, this is what a wristband entitles you to, as well as police force, because we also have sheriff's deputies so they can be able to see exactly what that is. But I, I don't have a problem with requesting the police force and sheriff's deputies to escort anybody inside that yet-to-be-defined area back to get a wristband or you're back into the establishment.
If that's a legal idea.
Period.
Yeah, George.
The question that comes to my mind is, is open consumption different than public intoxication? And if, if consumption is what we're talking about, and intoxication would take care of the overdrive of staggering and, and meandering out into the roadway and that type of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just a thought, but there, there's a question.
There's gotta be a difference between the two.
No, there's, there's difference between the two. I mean, we can all have a, technically if you want to, big picture, when you drink, you're intoxicated technically. But I think we all have been, I can have two beers and be fine. I can have three beers, I can have four beers and be fine. But I think we all know what intoxication is versus have no.
Would your thought be more in the, the point eight level?
Well, no.
You'd ask, you don't have to be point eight to be intoxicated.
Right, right.
Point zero eight.
Attitude and action say a lot about that too.
Point eight, you're in the casket.
So yeah, attitude would be part of it, if you're gonna get a little bit fussy.
In my years, usually town celebrations, you're kind of, you live in a gray area.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, warnings go a lot late, always. Honestly, in my experience, I don't like the rest of people during town celebrations because one, it takes me out of the town for about a good hour. And then I'm gone, my officers are gone, they were one less or two less officers.
So effectively, the wristband does not entitle you to be public intoxicated.
No, it doesn't.
It simply allows you.
Have some drink to be classy.
And we talked a little bit about two. Is this applied just to beer? Is it applied to alcoholic beverage, a mixed drink? It's inside of a Yeti cooler, you have no idea. I said, I will not require him or anybody on force to investigate what's the contents of something. They won't do that. But the intent would be that it allows you to take a can of beer. We don't want bottles of beer because if you drop one, we got glass all over and none of us like to clean that up the next day, especially Jay.
I know anytime anybody's kind of come to me and complained about it, I always tell them, I look at it as a donation. I don't have a problem donating 10 bucks to, or however much it is to Hudson Days. You know, there's, there's a few people, and there's probably more that are from out of town that I don't know that wouldn't come and talk to me, that may say something about it, but I just, you know, I don't, first of all, I don't drink, so it's not a huge deal to me, but I still wouldn't look at it as a bad thing to just donate 10 bucks to Hudson Days. So that's the part that I.
We've been real fortunate through the years to not have very many issues like drink. I mean, we've been very fortunate. There's been a few instances where the past chief has gone and talked to the people and resolved it that way.
Yep.
But we would like to see even the Beer Garden people have to have a wristband. The reason being is they're coming to our celebration. And one of the things that was brought up is, well, why don't we have a liquor license and serve it ourselves? Well, for one thing, I'm not sure the Lions Club would like to handle the insurance on that, the liability. And they're the ones that are covering us right now.
Have you, Jim, have you talked to any of the establishments as far as, you know, Fire Department's fairly easy. It's there, it's pretty much contained until the end of the dance or when somebody gets tired of the loud music and decides to come up and see what's going on. Have you talked to the AMVets, Federal Pub or Triangle recently on whether they would allow us to enforce inside the Beer Garden?
They've not been very open about doing it. We've never actually confronted them, but.
It's hard when it's their business too. Are you gonna turn down business that isn't a drinking? I mean, I understand their point a bit too.
Where this whole thing come from is, of our overall budget, the contributions we get from the people selling the beer and booze, making a pretty good three-day income off of it, don't support us very well. So we were looking for avenues to.
To get a little bit more out of the.
Correct.
Is there a better fundraising way?
What we'd actually like to do, what we find it very difficult to do, is fence off the entire downtown. So anybody that enters, so it wouldn't be a.
So it wouldn't be a beer wristband, it would be a walk-in tour, entry.
An entry. And I've done the feat to block it off and it would be possible, but we're trying to be all-inclusive, family-oriented if we can.
Yeah, you're also, if you start charging an entrance, you're gonna lose a lot of the hometown.
That's right. And we want the kids, we want kids and we want families to enjoy this as well. This isn't just a big beer bust.
So, so what would, what would happen? Thinking off the cuff, and this is probably the stupidest thought. But if the city denied Beer Gardens for those three establishments, their people could still go outside and drink, they could still have stuff, but they wouldn't have to put up a fence. They just have to realize that the only legal way for those individuals to come out of their doors is to have a wristband.
That's what we're, I think that's what we're after.
Can they do that? Can they legally do that though if they're applying for, we can't do that.
Because they apply to the state for the Beer Garden, not to the city. And so we don't have.
I don't think that's a part of their.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with them.
Yeah, no, and we can't.
The city can just deny Beer Gardens.
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
Not according, not according to state code, we cannot. If they apply for it, we can't, there's no way that we can, without going to court, there's no way that we can, not a part of their.
Do we have any physical spa, is there anything as far as space? What, do they have a limit on how far the Beer Garden can go from their establishment or something? So there is that, so obviously Federal Pub is kind of, the width of their building and out front, maybe 10 feet from the curb. So there's probably some type of physical restriction there.
And I think most of them are probably within.
Okay.
They're within their confines of the.
Okay.
Is this just, and this is just a question, again, I'm not on the committee, I'm not, I don't have a problem paying 10 bucks or whatever it is for a wristband, but is this the best avenue for fundraising that, I mean, is there another way instead of banking this money on this being the fundraiser? What else can be done to make up that?
We need quite a few fundraisers. You like to sit down sometimes.
Yeah, no, like I said, that's why I'm just asking. With you guys coming to us, that's why I'm asking.
It falls on the businesses and some of us more than others.
App, oh, came from a family business for 40 years too.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. I just don't know that how legal it is for us to enforce the city-wise to make this the best. Not that I'm not for it.
I'd check with Heather, is he?
But yeah.
Because the other thing would be is, do we have a, a, a sales pitch to the three establishments that says, hey, if you would enforce a wristband sale, you wouldn't have to worry about fencing off an area?
Or what's the dollar amount you're trying to get budget-wise to get to this point too? You know, what, what dollar amount are you trying to make up for? And can anybody else help with?
How much did you get from the wristband sales last year?
Spent $4,000 for two years we've done it.
Okay. Would you really want to jack that up a little further?
It's a drop in the bucket.
Typically spending anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 on the event.
And 90% of it's free.
Yeah, I understand.
But, you know, that's a lot of money to put out and to have it be pretty free for everybody. That's what we try to keep it as. And, you know, we try not to charge the kids much so that the kids can enjoy as much as they can. And yeah, it's really not, we're not trying to target the people that are drinking alcohol, but on the same token, pretty much anybody that's drinking alcohol can afford a $10 wristband. And if they can't, they shouldn't be drinking.
My, my whole hangup is, is getting inside, enforcing something inside of the physical walls of those establishments or inside the Beer Gardens.
Well, if it's Beer Gardens, can you give, can you put a capacity on it? State those up.
A fire marshal?
And what is that capacity?
It's outside the walls, I don't know.
I've never seen him overcrowded.
Yeah.
I mean, it's no different than the capacity, you know, inside the set that I'm sure there's.
But I think if we make it so that we don't, can't do it inside the Beer Gardens, and I, it's just throwing this out, how many people are just gonna crowd in there and, you know, just hang out there and not come out because then they don't have to pay the $10s?
Well, last, last year, as I recall, and you weren't here, of course, I don't recall us having any directed policy to the police force to enforce wristbands outside of Beer Gardens. So, so that's a step in the right direction, I hope.
Maybe.
Maybe. What would be interesting, does anybody from personal observation, a lot of you spend a lot of time down there, any estimate of how many people were out there drinking beers without a wristband?
Well, there was, there was some. I, I approached more than my share.
Hey.
I, I would have to say, when I, I grabbed Judy, they had a couple out of towners that were getting a little lippy, but I think there was eight in that group, just one instance. A legitimate number. I wouldn't go over 200, I don't think. It, it's more, I think it's more defiance from some of them. Not so much the citizens, the, the people that we're providing customers an entertainment for that won't get back to Hudson Days.
Well, I know I had one group of four come up to me and three of them readily and the fourth one was being obstinate about it. And I says, that's it? And the other three talked to me and says, hey, you gotta do it. You want me to fork the $10, I'll fork the $10, is what the guy said. So it was peer pressure to them and he forked it over and got his wristband. But what I told Chief Banks is, is what my instructions, my proposed instructions would be, is if you find somebody outside of the yet-to-be-fully-defined area without that wristband and they got a beer in their hand, you inform them, you escort them either to a wristband so that they buy one, or you escort them back to the establishment and inside of there. Which, if we haven't done any of that in the past, I would consider that a major step to at least test that for this year, subject to Heather's approvals and review of it. And if she doesn't approve it, first thing I'll do is let all of you guys know, let Jamie Weller is the, the main person. So you can distribute it to everybody.
And just to play kind of a devil's advocate, I'm sure with the AMVets, you know, the members are gonna say, you know, I can be in this establishment, I pay my membership here, I shouldn't have to buy a wristband for a place that I am a member of.
Correct. When it's a private club, it's, when it's open, the public could, laws.
So the question of the group, are you willing to go along with that as my recommendation? If it is, that's what we'll have as the council action here in a few minutes.
Well, if we can't control the Beer Garden, that's the next best step.
Could we ensure that the Beer Garden's completely closed off or there'd be an entrance and an exit? Because I know like with the Triangle tab and with the AMVets, people tend to get a little generous as to what that Beer Garden area is. So I mean, if there's a way that we could make sure they define it as to how they're defining it to the state.
I thought we had fences.
There's areas, but. The fence gets knocked over and.
Yeah, and I remember from the, especially on the Federal Pub, because I was sitting right across from it selling the wristbands, is, it was kind of a loosely-defined area. Somebody could walk right up the street, pass the old hardware store and the attorney's office and go straight into it. I don't think it was really well-defined. Unless it was, unless the fence was at the curb and exit round, was that what it is? So you could walk into it not being Beer Garden? Yeah, we can do that and Chrissy can check with the state to see, to confirm that we have no jurisdiction and to confirm whatever the legal extent of that is. And if necessary, I'll personally go visit with each one of the establishments and say, this is it, and here's your area.
I just think you have to be really careful too, though. I mean, it's, it's not a city function. It's not a city event. That, not that we're not willing to help out as much as we can, but it's not a city event. You know, just like if you were on the concert or something anywhere else, it, it's hard to, you don't want to play that devil's advocate too much either.
So we could put razor wire.
Yes.
You know, I could get some clay mortar.
Oh.
We'd maybe patrol it if you'll let us.
Absolutely.
Snipers up there. It is defined in a, in this thing code on Beer Gardens.
Okay. Yeah, it's when you and Chrissy can figure that out.
Okay.
You guys obviously researched what other communities do. And you pretty much put forth all the ideas you came up with after researching that.
Some of them are, are holding it not in their downtown, they're holding it offsite.
Sterns falls.
Right. And we want to hold it downtown. We really do, and the park.
I don't think you get the attendance if you don't either. That's part of it too.
But we're one of them. We took our tables to, I think Dunkerton. It was, it was not even close to being downtown. It was out in an area where they just had a big grassy area and that was it. That isn't what we want to do. But we want to keep expanding what we do and it takes cash. Goodwill only goes so far.
So do you think inclusion of the route down to the fireworks and back is.
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, there's some alleyways that everybody could work with here. I mean, that's.
And I think if we have it in the resolution that, that the latitude to have a beer outside of Beer Gardens or establishments is limited to beers purchased from those four establishments. Is that reasonable to put in there so that we have that? The main thing is, is yeah, it's not gonna allow people in the years DJ to get stuff. But I'm more concerned about if they were simply saying, hey, we got open season, I'm gonna bring my 30-pack into the cooler and treat all the friends.
You gotta be careful though too because you've got places down there like all those at, or my dad's.
But it's on their private property.
Right.
It's on their private property. And this, because this is only defined as the public right-of-way, so that's where it's critical that we come up and all review what we outline as that area.
One thing I saw last year, was down at the fireworks, everybody parks their vehicles down there, right? They were doing exactly what you're saying, bringing a cooler and handing everything around.
We'll have to see what we can do about, on public later.
Well, some of it was private, some of it was co-op property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, also, yeah, you know, that's, that's tough because how many police officers do you have that can walk out and down there too?
They can only do so much.
Right, yeah. You're never gonna get another one. We got. 87.
How many officers?
87.
87 officers? I believe there's two reserve parcs. And two different shifts on Saturday.
Four or six total.
Something like.
So really, the enforcement area to me is predominantly the downtown and maybe a walk-through down to there. Because once the fireworks starts, you're not gonna be checking anything. But as long as we can advertise to people that you can walk down there with a beer, provided you have a wristband, that's, that's the tough part.
Just echoing what we talked about, does, does the committee provide some money for my officers or is it something I gotta pay for out of my budget?
We pay for it out of a budget. As we also pay for.
For budgets.
Annual blogs. You pay for.
Because we don't.
That's out of my budget?
No.
Yeah, yeah, you've got that type of budget.
So am I correct that our basic, we don't write a check out to the.
No, we do that too.
We do that too, right?
Yeah.
Was that like three or five thousand?
Like 2,500.
2,500. Twenty-five hundred, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there is money that, you know, obviously-
And whatever the street department has to do to get ready for it, that all comes out of the city budget.
Yeah, because the roadblocks have to go up that day too, to block off Dale Drive for the fireworks and everything.
Which I think most of it should be budgeted, I don't think there's, or if I do, if I throw a surprise at you, you know, but yeah.
Yeah, the city's worked real well with some doing blocks, getting the roads blocked and helping with the car show, making sure all of that stuff is blocked off, or some of the city employees have done a good job.
Can that completely be more volunteers, we can help more.
Brenda, don't turn around.
She did her time.
I did, you couldn't.
Any, any more discussion comments anybody wants to make?
I think that'll really help, if I can, you know.
Well, last year was our first year at it and, you know, it, it went better than we expected last year. So I expect with advertising, pre-advertising, letting people know what our plan is, and after we have last year under our belt and they know that we're gonna do wristbands, I think it'll be better.
I agree. I think some of it was a little bit of, they were caught off-guard and, and then they're caught off-guard and drunk and then they lose their minds over a wristband and, yeah. Got jumped several times.
But I, but I think people would appreciate to be, I mean, they like walking between establishments. You've got the class reunions down there, they mingle with their classes around, you know.
And being able to sit in front of the, you know, entertainment and stuff. Okay, any other comments?
My only comment would be the fire station, the route to and from.
Yeah, which is-
I don't believe that, that should be included, because the fire department's always done a very good job of no alcohol leaves their, their place.
I raised it just as a thought from my end, you, you're the experts on that part, so not-
Isn't the road closed that, at that time too?
Uh, they moved the block, they take the blockade down.
Okay, so it'd be a case of you get beer there, you drink it there.
I don't, I don't think it looks like that they are, they do a very good job down there.
If that's been their tradition, then, yeah, I say we, we-
Okay.
So we don't need that.
Plus, it's only Friday night, it's not like it's both nights that people are walking back and forth either, so you wouldn't have to do it.
Right.
You know, I would almost-
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm totally fine with that, glad you brought that up. That was just my thought, okay?
Yeah, that's a good, no.
Okay, we'll close the discussion on that. You guys are welcome to stay through the action or whatever we've gotta go through yet, or feel free to leave. We'll get it in on that basis in the motion.
Thank you.
Plus, we got not video, you have to.
Thanks for volunteering, we appreciate you.
Okay, we are at, committee reports, Public Works Committee. Who? Public Works Committee.
That is Matt.
Uh, he was not at the meeting.
Oh.
Do you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Uh, so, let me get back to where I'm at. All right, so the first item that we talked about was the playground equipment at the ballfields and the material that we're going to use underneath the actual equipment. So Bullen Recreation out of Marshalltown, where we bought the playground equipment, gave us three recommendations. The first option was a loose fill rubber, and that was four dollars and fifty cents per square foot. And that is something that will have to be added occasionally, depending on if kids throw it out of the perimeter or whatever.
Eat it?
Or eat it, yeah. Um-
They do, they do that at the park.
Eat. Um, and then the, the second option was, um, to put in a wood fiber. And that is one to two dollars per square foot. And then that, if we would use that material, then they'd have to add new wood chips every three or four years or sooner. Again, depending on if the kids eat it, put it in their pocket, take it home with them, whatever they're doing with it. Uh, the other recommendation was to have a pour-in-place rubber, and this would just be all one structure. Uh, the cost of that is fifteen dollars per square foot. And with all of the options, there has to be some, something underneath it. Uh, so it was either recommended to do pea gravel or even do a concrete slab, uh, or even recycle concrete. And with the third option, with the pour-in-place, there was, there's no replacement, no upkeep for that. And so it was motioned to do the third option after the Public Works Director determined what the square footage of the, the perimeter of the area is going to be. And then, uh, Jeremy presented information about a blower inspection for the three blowers that are out at the sewer plant. And the three blowers that we do have are actually original to the building back from nineteen seventy. And so even, so they would just like to have someone look at them on an annual basis, they're still in working condition. Uh, they're still able to get parts correct, yeah, so they're still able to get parts if something breaks down. But if it's something, if it goes completely out, then they have to actually probably put in a new one. And so, um, the cost of the annual vibration and temperature assessment would be twelve hundred bucks, which we thought was pretty mu, pretty good money spent, just because they're original to the building. Uh, so with the inspection, they will look at all of the equipment, they'll set the bearings, and they'll set the lower bearing hous, housing just in case if there's something that's out of whack. Uh, so if they have to do something where they have to rebuild one of the, one of the blowers, it's, it's an additional five hundred dollar labor charge, and they will do everything on-site, so, uh... And then we updated, Jake updated the committee on the street shop rebuild and about talking to a property owner on Dale Drive. And, um, he hasn't, as of right now, he's heard of something back from him, but we're just trying to work through all of, all of that right now. And then we talked about the dugout project, uh, at the ballfields and we'll update the committee as other information come in, so, yeah. Any questions?
One thing with the, um, I'm glad you guys didn't go with the wood chip for underneath there, because at the, at Gaming, we're getting a ton of requests for updated playground floors. Because the wood stuff is, um, they're coming back inspections, they get bugs in them. So all of the daycares and stuff are having to get rid of it because of, you know, bug bites and diseases and stuff like that that they can carry. So please don't go with that option, even if it is the cheapest.
As an update, subsequent to these minutes, Jake did a measurement of the square footage.
Yeah.
And if we went with the fifteen dollar per square foot, we're talking over sixty thousand dollars.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand.
No problem.
So, so what he has recommended is that we will go with the, um-
The chips.
The chips.
Not the wood chips, the rubber chips.
The rubber chips.
Okay.
That would mean sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
And that-
Compared to twenty-two grand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if, and we'll find out over the next couple of years what it takes as far as some refilling, it just didn't make sense. I agree with, we met, Jake met with us this morning and we said now, we agree with his recommendation.
We don't even know how many kids are gonna use that playground, I mean, we haven't had a playground down there ever, so.
No, I agree, but the wood chips are just not a good option, um, with, with everything that's up to date now.
I reached out to them today and, um, the street department will go up there and will prep the site. They're going to do the installation of the equipment, and then we'll go back in, we have to put some pea gravel down.
Right.
And then a matting.
And then fill on top.
Then we'll put the material on top, so that, that costs us doing the work.
Yeah. Um, awesome. My other question is about the blowers here. So to replace, they're fifty years old, okay? And we're gonna pay twelve hundred dollars a year to have them inspected, which I still don't think is a bad price, but what is the cost to replace them?
So it depends on what is wrong with them.
So if the whole thing had to be replaced, if a whole lower motor, whatever the heck the fifty-year-old thing is, and not that I know anything about the sewer plant, because I truly don't, how much would that cost? Because from me here, looking at this, if it's five hundred dollars in labor plus two hundred dollars plus this four-seventy-six, you're still only at about twelve hundred dollars, why not just replace them, they're fifty freaking years old?
Or replace one this year.
How many, how many are there?
There's, there's three of them. One thing I can chime in on that, is obviously we talk with a lot of the community classes and stuff like that. The City of Traer, for instance, they've got blowers down there, a lot newer than ours, they have nothing but issues.
Okay.
Our blowers are, they're old, but they're good.
Okay.
They draw a lot of power, that's one big downfall, but they're low maintenance. Since I've been here, we've had to replay or rebuild one blower. We had a different company than this rebuild it, but this company can do it on-site. I don't think this would have to be annually, I think we'd get away with doing it every other year. But for a standpoint of the blowers, I think it's typical we got, because they've, they've been proven, they've, they've done their job for a long time.
So even if they redid the bearings and stuff, it would be on the newer technology, which is not as good as the old technology, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't say not as good, I guess. There's pros and cons to each one. But these have proven themselves in the past fifty years and they're still running great. I mean, one thing we might wanna do is look at new, some new filters, that way they'll run little last-minute amps, but I, I'd stick with what we got.
And the, the Public Works did, um, the way that they approved it was doing them bi-annually, unless it was recommended that they do them annually, but if they can get by with bi-annually, that's what we'll do.
I was just thinking, at twelve hundred dollars a year, if it's only twelve hundred dollars to replace one, why not replace them?
They're gonna be a lot more than that. They're, they're a big blower, so.
So that's, I think the, what I have listed in here is just if they have to replace parts.
Yes.
So it's just the parts, you just punch them whole?
I just, that's something that I'd like Public Works to keep an eye on them, because-
If we have something catastrophic go wrong, I will definitely call up and get bids.
Right, and, and obviously saying it's gonna be a whole lot, we never, a whole lot to you and a whole lot to me, you're two completely different things.
Yeah.
So, you know, is it ten thousand dollars and we replaced one, you know, ten years of paying an inspection, is it make more sense to replace a blower? Is it fifty thousand, you know, that's a different story then to me.
What I could do is when they come down to their first inspection, I could have them shoot a surprise and replace it.
And that's what I was just gonna say, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it would be a good idea to know what we're dealing with, rather than continuously paying twelve hundred dollars year after year for fifty-year-old technology that, you know, and, and possibly, could it save us that much in energy? See, I always say that, my air conditioner is from the seventies at home and it would probably pay itself in two years, because it probably cost me more to run it than if I bought a new one.
You go through a lot of electricity.
Right, you know, so is that something that would-
I think you rate.
Yeah, stop it. Is that something that would offset costs here, that instead of paying that twelve hundred dollars every single or every two years, does it make more sense to look at those options? So that'd be great if you could get some, some numbers from that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
The other item that you brought up, just to give you a little bit more flavor, we had a little discussion at the Personnel, Admin, Finance Committee, which is responsible for property for the city. Uh, what we're looking at is some ground, as it says in there, off of Dale Drive. Just from, and this is all conceptual at this point, uh, which is, could we get enough ground at the right price to put up a new building to consolidate all of our, uh, old, old, old buildings from the Public Works, get it in one spot? If that were to happen, could we potentially have buyers for the other properties that would be vacating? So that's where we're at. We know that if we were to get the ground at an agreed-to price, to get the right-sized building up for the long haul, with drive-through bays, wash bays, all that type of stuff, maybe a half million dollars, which would be an obvious one to go to the Gaming Association to try to get fifty percent. So those are just giving you a little bit more flavor of what's going on.
Right, and make sure you understand too, that before you offer anything on land, or anything, you wanna do that altogether. Contingency on this, because you could end that all into that, but you cannot have it purchased before you apply for it.
Oh, so the Gaming will cover, will cover land too? Heck, yeah, okay.
Potentially, I, I mean-
Yeah, okay.
It'd be something that you wanna look at here.
Okay.
But, but if, if we were in a timing scenario that it just wasn't working out-
I mean, that's up to you, I mean, if you're saving money.
We could still go to the Gaming for the building, even though we owned the ground prior to that. But if, if we had it all together, they would consider the ground acquisition prices.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Just, just wanted to make sure it wasn't negating their ability to go for the building cost.
No, 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 no.
What's a process like that usually take to go through, how long?
To get a Gaming grant?
Yeah.
Um, you have to do a letter of intent, they do it twice a year, so potentially six months, but, um, I don't know when next rounds do.
Um, I know the letter of intent for the fall-
We just got letter of intent done.
Is, yeah, the, they just opened the letter of intent for the fall, and so then those are due the first of April.
Right, which you can always do a letter of intent, then you can withdraw it if it's not something that falls through.
Yeah, and the Gaming individuals, uh, two of them, they called me today and they're gonna come in and visit with me and Chrissy on the twenty-fifth of March to get an idea, if you happen to be available that day, from your thought process, or at least feed Chrissy and-
Yeah, send me an invite to it, I can make sure I'm available.
Because that way, what they wanna do is get their five-year long-range plan.
We also need to, you know, and that's one of the things that, wow, we're going long tonight. We have not had a planning session council-wise for a few years, as far as long-range planning for-
You're talking like goal-setting?
Our goal-setting from three years ago, that we haven't?
Yes, not necessarily goal-setting.
Chrissy helped me update for a couple of years, but-
Yeah, not necessarily even goal-setting, but-
You're just talking long-range planning?
Yeah, long-range planning type of thing between us.
Should be a good work session in April or after, when I get back.
No, come back early.
I'll bring you up to date later. Okay, any other, thanks for the update, any other questions for Chrissy? Okay. Uh, public hearing.
Where are we at?
Yeah. Uh, I'll open the public hearing regarding the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. Thanks Jake.
Thanks Jake.
I was just moving, I was a little-
He's staying.
He's staying parked.
Any written comments?
Sound used to come to everyone.
Uh, any oral comments from the floor? Uh, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to weigh the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution Two-Five-Six-Nine for approval to offer position of volunteer fire, uh, volunteer fire position to Aaron-
Twenty.
Aaron Twenty.
Approved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Engel?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Four-zero. Item B, Discussion Action Regarding Hudson Day's Committee Request for Wristbands.
I forget, is it better to table it or just say no to it and then bring it back up when we have the information from?
I'd rather, yeah, I was gonna say, I'd rather not make any-
Yeah, let's just-
Motion.
Well, we'll comment that we are going to work towards a, a formal documentation of what we verbally discussed with the-
Look for legalities.
You can, you can move to table it.
Or can we just move it and deny it and then put it back on the thing, or what is better, I forget which one's better.
I'd rather table than deny.
It'd be, it'd be better to table it.
Okay, so I'll move to table it for legal information.
Or Eric can die for a lack of-
I could die for a lack of, oh, motion and a second.
But I, but I told them I was gonna have it on the, I, I would prefer that we table it, as opposed to deny, but that's like-
So that we can hear from Heather and the legalities.
We're gonna have more documentation for the next meeting.
But if you table it, what we're bringing up later is the same resolution, right?
No, there's no resolution.
There's no resolution, this is just a discussion.
We didn't have a formal resolution together, it was just coming up with, okay.
Because we weren't sure, I wasn't sure.
Did we have conceptual concurrence? I wanted, I wanted us to have the ability, if the council said no or absolutely yes, but, so we're table, so do we even have to table it?
There's nothing to table, it's just a resolution.
Yeah, there's really nothing to table, because there's no-
No, because it's not a resolution or anything.
Yeah, you're just-
Just, just point out in the minutes that there was discussion and at a future council agenda, we will have a more formal resolution to review.
Talk further with the term.
That work?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so I don't need any kind of report on that.
So you're gonna have, so you're gonna do a, a resolution later, probably?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to-
Potential.
Yeah. Uh, IMC, Discussion Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Eight-Two-Eight, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa by the City Hudson City Code, Twenty Seventeen, Chapter Ninety-Two, Water Rates, Section Ninety-Two-O-Two, Rates of Service.
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye. Four-zero.
And this is, I'm just curious, because Waterloo is looking at a huge increase in their sewer rates. So I'm, I'm just curious if we know how that's gonna affect us or anything, or we'll find out next year.
That should not affect us.
Till, till they pass it and they let us know what it is.
Because we're not transporting any, yeah, we're not transporting any sewage there.
Right.
The reason, the reason the rates ten percent is to cover all the VNR things that they have to implement.
And I don't know that, I don't know that if they raise their sewer rates, if that's gonna have any effect on, on us.
It shouldn't.
It shouldn't, but-
Water it would, but sewage it shouldn't.
Yeah, if they have a significant increase on water, then that would be, okay, okay, yep, thanks.
Uh, roll call? Nope, I didn't get that.
We'd have to do that.
Okay. Uh, Item E?
D.
D. Discussion Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Eight-Two-Nine, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa by the Hudson City Code, Twenty Seventeen, Chapter Ninety-Two, Sewer Rates, Section Ninety-Nine-O-One, Sewer Service Targets Required. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Reister?
Aye.
Engel?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Four-zero. Item E, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution Two-Five-Eight-Zero, Resolution to Approve the Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year Ending June Thirty, Twenty-Twenty-One.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Uh, can, can we make the point that we dropped a penny?
Yes, we can make the point-
Just, just to have it out there?
That last year's rate was eleven forty, this year's rate is eleven thirty-nine, so we have dropped it.
We have dropped it. Yes, Matt, we dropped a penny.
Lot more pennies to go.
Maybe someday.
Uh, roll call.
Funs?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Engel?
Aye.
Four-zero. Item F, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution Two-Five-Eight-One, a resolution to approve payment to Hudson Municipal Electric Utility, a share of the insurance dividend from Blackhawk Insurance Services for April first, twenty eighteen to March thirty-first, twenty nineteen, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three dollars and three cents.
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Engel?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Uh, Item G, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution Two-Five-Eight-Two, a resolution to approve a resolution to set a public hearing. This is just to set the public hearing, to approve the request of Kurt Beavers to approve Beavers Fifth Minor Subdivision Platt,